Okay, we'll move on right onto contract and business. Our first item is item A. Adopt a resolution placing an initiative measure on the ballot for the November 4th, 2014 Municipal Election Amending Ordinance 1284. Chapter 12.26 of the San Bruno Municipal Code to allow solely within the Transit Corridors Plan area new building height restrictions, increased density of certain residentially zoned parcels, and above-ground multi-story parking structures. Direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of said initiative measure and authorizing submission of ballot arguments supporting the measure on behalf of the city council.
Through the chair. As before, I'll have to recuse myself from this item since I live within close proximity to the transit corridor and to where this affects our community. So I will be stepping out, recusing myself, and back after this topic.
Through the chair for the same reasons as the vice mayor. I will also be recusing myself.
Want to mention before we get started, since there's a little bit of a crowd, we have speaker cards in the back. You can fill one out and give them to the city clerk so we can do this in an orderly manner. I'd appreciate that. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I could just give some organizing comments. We've prepared a fairly detailed staff report for your information and that of the members of the public both here and watching us on television tonight on this important and exciting issue for our community. Just as a housekeeping issue, David Weltering, our Community Development Director, will deliver a report that identifies the content and the purpose of the proposed ballot measure, after which our city attorney, Mark Zaffarano, will provide some procedural comments regarding the conduct of an election. We recognize that there are numbers of people in the audience who may have an interest either in asking questions or making comments, and we welcome those. We've notified a fairly significant area radius around the transit corridor footprint and are glad to see the people who have made it a priority to come here tonight. It would just suggest that it might be efficient simply to allow us to complete the staff presentation, take any initial questions from the city council, and even though it will go probably a little bit longer than a normal staff report, we think we have some important information to share that will assist in understanding by the public. So we'll proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The purpose of this agenda item is for the city council to consider placing a ballot initiative measure before San Bruno voters on November 4th of this year to implement important aspects of the adopted San Bruno Transit Corridors Plan. This plan, also referred to as the TCP, was adopted on February 12th, 2013, after several years of research, community discussion, and public engagement. A full environmental impact report was prepared and certified for the plan. The plan covers approximately 155 acres and includes the city's downtown along San Mateo Avenue, as well as portions of nearby El Camino Real, San Bruno Avenue, and Huntington Avenue. On the overhead, you'll see the outline of the project area is depicted here behind The TCP, the Transit Corridors Plan, provides a vision and a guide for the revitalization and long-term physical and economic development, redevelopment, and enhancement of these important commercial corridors. The adopted TCP stipulates that eminent domain shall not be used on residential properties as part of future development and redevelopment within the plan area. It is not the intent of the city to initiate development in the plan area, but that the city has a plan that will guide and facilitate future development opportunities and interests in this area. The TCP includes policies, development standards, design guidelines, and financing tools and measures to stimulate and guide private investment to address aging and obsolete infrastructure in facilities, to bring new stores, restaurants, housing, office development, and new public spaces, and a bicycle-friendly and transit-friendly environment to this important area of the community. Implementation of the plan will generate new revenues, including sales and property taxes, transient occupancy taxes, and business license fees, which are expected to more than cover the facility and service needs as a result of future development within this area. During the preparation of the Transit Corridors Plan, the steering committee that was appointed by the city council identified certain constraints to achieving the vision of the plan. These constraints in part related to the passage of City Ordinance 1284 in 1977, which restricts citywide building height to 50 feet or three stories, the number of residential dwelling units in residential districts to that number allowed in 1974, and that above-ground multi-story parking garages are not permitted throughout the city. Research was conducted involving discussions with architects and real estate professionals and economists that confirmed that these constraints often were deterrents to new development projects and the ability to make projects economically feasible within the city of San Bruno. Moreover, generally, since 1977, the passage of Ordinance 1284, it has required successful voter-approved amendments to this ordinance to allow for more significant development projects to be realized in this community. Examples include the Tanforan Center, that was Proposition A in 1984, Bay Hill Business Park, Proposition A in 1987, and the Crossing, Measure E in 2001. Therefore, the adopted TCP recommends amendments to Ordinance 1284 to remove certain detrimental constraints. Given that Ordinance 1284 was put in place by a vote of the people, it is necessary for there to be a ballot initiative measure approved by a majority of the people of San Bruno to amend Ordinance 1284. As directed by the city council, staff has prepared a resolution attached to your packet this evening for consideration to place a ballot initiative measure before local voters this November to amend Ordinance 1284, consistent with the recommendations of the Transit Corridors Plan. The initiative measure is referred to as the Downtown and Transit Corridors Economic Enhancement Initiative. The proposed ballot language is summarized as follows. To stimulate economic enhancement in San Bruno's Transit Corridors Plan area, shall the city amend Ordinance 1284 to allow, one, buildings exceeding the maximum height of 50 feet by 20 feet along El Camino Real, 15 feet along San Bruno Avenue, 5 feet along San Mateo Avenue, and 40 feet in the Caltrain Station area. Two, development on 42 residential parcels exceeding the density, in other words, the number of dwelling units, allowed in 1974. And third, allow for above-ground multi-story parking garages. We have a number of maps that depict these measures. The first map here provides the overview of the proposed increased building height areas. There are four different height areas. Remember that presently, with Ordinance 1284 in place, the maximum building height is 50 feet or three stories throughout the community. The proposed amendment would increase those heights, and we have another slide or slides that will go through this for you. Along El Camino Real, the building height would be increased from the 50-foot base by 20 feet or an additional two stories. And this slide shows the El Camino Real segment. The next slide will show the San Bruno and related areas. In those areas, the additional increment is 15 feet or two stories. The next slide will show the downtown along San Mateo Avenue. The increase there over the base is 5 feet or one story. And then finally, in the station area, close to the Caltrain Station, the increase would be an additional 40 feet or four stories. The TCP, the adopted Transit Corridors Plan, does allow for architectural features such as cupolas, corner tower elements, and rooftop equipment screens to extend an additional 10 feet above the stated maximum height limits with Planning Commission approval. The proposed amendments would only apply, these amendments I referenced, would only apply within the Transit Corridors Plan area, the 155-acre area described here in this Leading up to this meeting, the city council held a publicly noticed special meeting on May 29th of this year to review the vision of the Transit Corridors Plan and the recommended implementation measures of that plan, including the recommended amendments that I've summarized to Ordinance 1284. The meeting was well-attended, and there appeared to be general support for moving forward with the Transit Corridors Plan. Comments received at the meeting included concerns about assuring adequate parking with the proposed new development in the Transit Corridors Plan area, and making sure that new development projects in the TCP area are sensitive to and compatible with existing nearby low-density residential development. One of the proposed amendments to Ordinance 1284 would allow for, as I mentioned, above-ground multi-story parking structures, to allow for more parking in the downtown area. And one of the measures, implementation measures, in the document itself, the TCP document itself, calls for preparation of an area-wide parking management plan. Further, the adopted TCP includes a section on required transition measures from new mixed-use development to low-density residential development. These measures include a minimum of a 10-foot setback to low-density residential development where none exists today with current development requirements, and an additional 15-foot building setback for portions of a building above three stories. Those are in the TCP. Additionally, the TCP includes development standards and design guidelines, and includes and requires individual project-level review, environmental review, and design review, so that impacts such as impacts to privacy, noise, lighting, and concerns about overall design can be addressed. But based on the comments received at the May 29th meeting, staff is recommending to further strengthen the transition measures relative to existing low-density residential development by adding a pre-application submittal process for all projects within the TCP area that are on parcels that are 20,000 square feet or larger. The 20,000-square-foot threshold exists in the Transit Corridors Plan as the size of a parcel at which one of the required development standards, a 2.0 floor-area ratio, is removed to encourage the assembly of parcels within the plan area to allow for more architectural interest and diversity, and the opportunity to add more development potential and onsite parking. One would expect that these proposed projects would be larger in scale and massing and appropriate for additional review. An explanation of floor-area ratio. A floor-area ratio establishes the maximum development square footage allowed on a parcel So, for example, with a 2.0 floor-area ratio, FAR limitation in place, and a 10,000-square-foot parcel, one would be allowed to develop up to 20,000 square feet, 2 times 10,000, of space or development area on that property. Given the relatively small individual parcel sizes within the TCP area, more than 90% of them are under 20,000 square feet currently, we would expect, staff would expect, that without assembly, most of those parcels would be developed with perhaps two- and three-story buildings. And so it appears to us that with the assembly, there's the incentive to bring properties together, to create more architectural interest, allow for onsite parking, et cetera, but those would be larger projects and probably would warrant the additional review. The pre-application submittal process that we're suggesting being added to the transition measures would involve, before an application is actually submitted formally, that the pre-application process would entail preliminary drawings being submitted to staff for review by staff, an outside design professional consultant, and then that these plans would be brought to the Architecture Review Committee at a notice public meeting so that neighbors and the public in general could come and comment on the project. With this process in place, these typically larger projects would have the benefit of outside consultant review, staff review, and public input prior to a formal application being made, giving the developer the opportunity to make appropriate adjustments as the application is brought in for actual submittal for review. This process that we're suggesting would be put in place by an amendment to the municipal code as part of the city's zoning code update process. There are some alternatives that you could consider, the city council could consider. We're suggesting that parcels that are assembled that are 20,000 square feet or greater would be subject to this pre-application submittal review. You could, on the other hand, look at perhaps all projects, regardless of size of parcel, that abut low-density residential, because that's the area that seemed people were most concerned about. Our sense is, though, that, as I mentioned earlier, with the floor-area ratio provision in place, typically on those properties that are under 20,000 square feet, the size of buildings will typically be two- and three-stories in any case, more typical to what would be allowed today because of those small parcel sizes. So the additional process and expense perhaps is not warranted, particularly given that the transition measures in terms of setback and stepback that I mentioned would apply as well as full environmental review and a development review process. You could also consider a second alternative, and that would be that, say, parcels of 20,000 square feet or larger only abutting the low-density residential areas could be considered. But again, our sense is that these larger projects may have impact even if they're across the street and not directly abutting. So we stand by our recommendation of those projects that are 20,000, on parcels of 20,000 square feet or greater, to be those that would warrant the further review with the pre-submittal process. Overall, the fiscal impact that we have identified for moving this ballot measure initiative forward on the November 4th election of this year would be about $35,000 would be the additional cost to bring the measure forward. And it's anticipated with the new development that would come forward with the implementation of the Transit Corridors Plan that the additional revenue that would come to the city would more than cover public service and facilities costs generated by this new development. We've attached a resolution for your consideration this evening that recommends you place this ballot measure before the voters with the amendments to the Ordinance 1284, as I mentioned previously, the amendments regarding building height, regarding residential densities, and regarding allowing for above-ground parking garages. There are options you could consider to this resolution. The options could be that instead of the full TCP area, you could look at a reduced area. Our recommendation is the full TCP area to realize the full benefits of that plan. You could also look at adjustments to the standards, the height standards as an example, or you could look at placing the ballot measure on a future ballot. We'd like to share with you some photo simulations of what the area could look like, the Transit Corridors Plan area could look like with the implementation of the full Transit Corridors Plan, including the amendments to Ordinance 1284. We also have some boards at the back of the room that depict those photo simulations as well. So here's an existing condition along El Camino Real at the entry to our downtown on San Mateo Avenue, and then the vision of what could be with full implementation of the Transit Corridors Plan. This is a possible outcome of full implementation of the Transit Corridors Plan with the amendments that we're discussing tonight to Ordinance 1284.
Dave, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Can you just go back, just let people, let that sink in, that those are predominantly three-story buildings, and then the fourth story, which would be an increase to that area, is setback.
That's correct. Thank you. And then looking at the San Bruno Avenue area and station area, here's an existing condition, and then again, looking at the photo simulation as what could be, again, with full implementation of the Transit Corridors Plan and the amendments to 1284 being discussed this evening. And then finally, again, kind of looking at the station area, existing condition, and then what the area could look like. And again, as Councilmember Abara mentioned, looking at such elements as the stepbacks on the upper floors, for example, as you can see very well in this plan, and the increased height, and the pedestrian and bicycle-friendly environment, the transit-friendly environment, really trying to work with our transit assets here in San Bruno, the Caltrain Station, BART, our highways and whatnot, and to really bring housing, office opportunities, employment opportunities, close to these transit facilities that we have here in this community. At this point, I would like to pass the presentation over to our city attorney. We've tried to provide some background and also some description of the proposed amendments to Ordinance 1284, and some of the highlights of the Transit Corridors Plan with full implementation. Our city attorney will talk a little bit about the next steps or possible next steps to actually put the ballot measure initiative forward on the upcoming ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, just a couple of brief comments about what the resolution in front of you tonight does if it were to be adopted. So if it is adopted, both the resolution and the ordinance that's attached to it would be forwarded by our city clerk to the county elections official to be placed on the ballot. So the resolution itself says what the ballot measure is going to say. It's in the box. If you're looking at the packet, it's on page 70. And what's in that box with a yes or a no is what would actually appear on the ballot. In addition to that, the ordinance that's attached to the resolution, and that's starting on page 73 of the packet, is the actual ordinance that would be in the voter pamphlet. So that's what voters would be voting on. Of course, the ballot language is limited to 75 words, so you can't put the whole thing in there. So you have to come up with an accurate summary as much as possible, but the ordinance itself is what would be either adopted or not adopted by the residents of San Bruno. The resolution does a couple of other important things. It authorizes me, the city attorney, to write what's called an impartial analysis, and that analysis is an objective statement of what the ordinance does, what the ordinance does not do, and how the ordinance relates to other laws that might affect it in the city or state law. So that's an important aspect of what this resolution would do. It also authorizes you, Mr. Mayor, to designate individuals, yourself, city council members or others, to write an argument in favor of the ordinance if it's your pleasure to put it on the ballot tonight, as well as rebuttal arguments in the event that there's an opposition argument to it. So those two things are specified in the resolution. There's also a very important thing in the resolution which commits the city, as David indicated, to this pre-application process for all projects that are on lots in excess of 20,000 square feet, including those that are near residential areas. And so in that resolution is the city's commitment to go through that process, and David has explained it to you, so I won't go into it in further detail. But it's also important to note that the resolution says that the Transit Corridor Plan was already the subject of an environmental impact report, and that EIR was reviewed and adopted by the city council some years ago. But the other important thing in the resolution is that all of the projects that come through that might be proposed, depending on their size, will all be subject to separate environmental review, and that environmental review will occur at the staff level, will occur at the architectural board level, at the planning commission level, and at the city council level, depending on how big the project is. So that's an important thing that we've included in the resolution that's in your packet. Also, the resolution makes it clear, as David indicated, that the Transit Corridor Plan prohibits the use of eminent domain on residential properties. So that's something that is carried forward in the resolution and therefore is also an official act of the city council. So tonight is the opportunity for the city council to make any changes, either to the ballot language or to the ordinance, because once adopted tonight, that's what gets forwarded to the clerk's office. And if you want to change it, now's the time to do it, or else you'd need to have another meeting in order to make any changes to it. So with that, I'll end my comments, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions of staff, but by the city council? Ken?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. David, I'm hoping I'm not, I'm hoping there are many other people in this audience that understand the guidelines that you explained detailed, but I'd like to make it a little more simpler. First, I'd like you to clarify, you use the term assembled partials many times, and so I'd like for the benefit of the audience to understand what that means and why you've stated. And also, if you can go through and give some idea of what exists today, and I'm sure there's many attendees here that are residences who live in a home on a parcel that's possibly 2,500 square feet to the average of 5,000 square feet, and I want to give them an idea of what a under 20,000-square-foot development is or an over 20,000-square-foot development is, in relation to what may be in their backyard or across the street from them, so that they can be assured that the guidelines that we're setting or proposing are giving them an opportunity to know exactly what, or have an input on what's going to be proposed. Got that?
I do. And sure, I'd be happy to respond. First off, as I mentioned, assembling or bringing together individual properties or parcels, the area that we're talking about, as I mentioned, and councilmembers you referred to as well, includes a large number, a very large number, of smaller parcels, 5,000 square feet, 7,500 square feet, 2,500 square feet. So there are very, very few, in fact, I think only 7% or so of the parcels that are actually within the Transit Corridors Plan area are 20,000 square feet or greater. And so as you kind of think about a mixed-use development project, and essentially, this plan is about creating a transit village with a mix of uses, housing, commercial, restaurants, retail, et cetera. The idea is to try to accommodate those various uses along with the supporting needs, for example, onsite parking. So as you have these smaller individual parcels, the idea, and there's actually an incentive, as we described in the presentation, an incentive to actually merge or bring together these smaller properties, parcels, to make larger parcels, so that you can create these mixed-use environments with, say, retail or commercial on ground floor, say, retail restaurants on ground floor, perhaps residential units or offices above. So as you do that, the idea would be to bring together properties, allow for the mixed-use developments, which are going to be larger in scale, and to support those with, in many cases, onsite parking. So that's the concept of assembly, you know, bringing together of individual smaller parcels to make larger parcels, and the plan actually encourages that. We know, though, over time, given the large number of parcels in the plan area, that there are going to be a range of parcel sizes and diversity of buildings, sizes, heights, et cetera. And that's a good thing in terms of just interest and architectural variety. As far as what we might anticipate on the smaller, under 20,000-square-foot parcels, generally, we would imagine with the floor-area ratio- generally, we would imagine with the floor area ratio I mentioned, kind of limiting the amount of square footage to two times the parcel size, say, two times 5,000 or two times 10,000 or two times 2,500. We would anticipate, generally speaking, two- and three-story buildings. And we do have, in the transit corridors plan, we have transition measures. And those measures are in place really to consider nearby residential, primarily nearby low-density residential uses. So the idea is that with redevelopment or new development in the transit corridors plan area, transition measures would require a minimum of a 10-foot setback for the new building to a property line where there's an adjacent and nearby low-density residential structure. So the setback requirement, 10 feet minimum. Then as you go, if you do go to three stories or above, above three stories, as you saw, as you pointed out, councilmember, in the one photo simulation, there's a requirement to step back. And in fact, on the overhead right now, we can see kind of, as you go over three stories, the requirement to actually step back. So that's another provision. There are also architectural guidelines. So in terms of, again, kind of looking at the photo on the screen behind us, you'll see that there's a lot of articulation and window treatments and whatnot to kind of create, again, architectural interest and kind of break up the facade, so that there's not a blank, consistent facade or wall, but there's kind of an in-and-out and undulation. So both vertically and horizontally, the idea is to break up the structures with offsets, with window treatments, with various architectural features, and those are part of the design guidelines. So we've got development standards like setbacks and step backs. We have the design guidelines, as I mentioned, in terms of the offsets and the articulation. And then we have processes like the design review. So these projects will go before our architectural review committee and before our planning commission for review and consideration. We also have an environmental review process. So individually, the projects will go through individual environmental reviews, so that matters such as light, noise, lighting, noise, variety of things, traffic, et cetera, would be considered. So the plan itself, transit corridors plan itself, has a variety of safeguards or measures for review of the individual projects. Regarding the larger parcels, 20,000 square feet or larger, we would anticipate, as I mentioned, that with the increased building heights that we described here, that yes, in those cases, with the larger 20,000-square-foot and larger parcels, we would anticipate the buildings in many areas being higher than three stories, higher than 50 feet, working up toward the maximums proposed with the amendments to ordinance 1284. But again, the setbacks, the step backs, the architectural guidelines, and as we're suggesting tonight, the further review, the strengthening of the transition measures with the pre-application seminal process, all of those, again, would be safeguards in terms of looking at the proposed structure and architecture. So I hope I responded to your questions. Thanks.
Irene, anything?
I just want to make sure, when you say assemble, and people know that's to bring together, so what we're saying is a developer could come in and buy a small parcel and then a small parcel next to it, and then whatever. So maybe they would assemble three or four parcels, but we're talking about somebody coming in and purchasing whatever is there, a store or residence. So that's what the assemble part means, is pulling it together.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I could just add, the maps that you have in the packet tonight and that are included in the transit corridor plan, the parcel maps show an unusually high number of smaller lots, as the director indicated. Those lots, as the director further indicated, it range from 2,000, 2,500 square feet up maybe to 5,000 or 7,500 square feet. Just to put that in a little bit of perspective, a typical residential, a typical single-family home lot in San Bruno and in many other communities is 5,000 square feet, 50 by 100, a lot that is 50 by 100. Parcels in our downtown, along the El Camino corridor, along the San Bruno Avenue corridor, for the most part, are that size or smaller, which is an extremely limiting factor to the ability of an interested developer. And again, the city doesn't own these parcels, is not going to go out and assemble itself, but is setting the platform, is making sure that the development standards and the vision for the community's future is consistent with an interest to revitalize and to provide the opportunity for developers and business owners to build out the vision that the city has identified in its transit corridor plans. So again, this isn't going to happen overnight. And just to have a little bit of context, it is an older pattern of development, shall we say, and one that is much more consistent with the way residential neighborhoods are laid out, and not very consistent with the sort of vibrant, modern type of non-residential development.
One last question.
Yes, Ken.
What's, on a typical commercial lot now, what is the FAR? Is it strictly just three stories or 50 feet?
Currently, it's 50 feet or three stories, but there are other development standards that come into play. So for example, parking would be one that would come into play in terms of the amount of development potential on a particular parcel.
So theoretically, you can build a three-story box that pretty much fills the entire parcel.
There is no FAR floor area ratio currently in our commercial districts. And theoretically, someone could do that. We do have, of course, our design review process, we have our planning commission, so we do have our review process.
It'd be a pretty box.
Well, we would certainly encourage, strongly encourage, offsets and articulation and good design.
All right. Anything else? Anything else from the council? As I mentioned earlier, we have some speaker cards, if you can give them to the clerk. I'll call you up when she gives the cards to me. We'd like to hear from you now, too. Carol? Thank you. Let's see, we'll try, we're going to try to limit this to two minutes if we can, because we have a crowd. Jamie Monazan? Jamie?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Ruane and city council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Jamie Monazan on Crestmore Drive. I've been a resident of San Bruno for almost 25 years. I'm raising my family here, and I really love this community. I've made a commitment to San Bruno to leave it better than I found it, and that's why I make improvements in my home, my landscape, and all around my neighboring areas, so that I'm doing my part. As CEO of the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce, I'm always working towards economic growth for San Bruno businesses, and I see the advantages to putting this issue before the San Bruno voters, so they can show their support in improving San Bruno business community and the transit corridor. I further feel that the purposes, the proposed changes in ordinance 1284, I've done my research, will increase opportunities for existing businesses, create jobs, and build new businesses to improve the San Bruno business community and the city as a whole. In my opinion, we will all benefit from a stronger commerce and entrepreneurship. I've seen that some of our neighboring cities have adopted such plans as this, and I think they have done a fine job. And I think it's San Bruno's turn. I believe San Bruno is poised and ready, not only to continue to be the city with a heart, but to possibly become the heartbeat of San Mateo County. The mission of the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce is to promote and enhance economic growth and vitality of San Bruno businesses and the community. As a mom, a homeowner, and a chamber CEO, a person who truly loves the city, I will work closely with the city myself in ways to promote and enhance the economic growth and vitality of San Bruno businesses and the community, whether you adopt this plan or not, but I'd really like to see it happen. With that said, I'm asking the council to please vote yes to add changes to ordinance 1284 to the November ballot, and I urge voters to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is from Tom Dietrich, and if I answer these questions, you can speak or not, it's up to you. But Tom says, will properties be reassessed for property taxes, number one? And number two, will the phrase prohibits the use of eminent domain on residential property be an act or legal provision of the TCP? Will it serve to protect homeowners? David, do you want to answer that?
Sure. Regarding the first question regarding reassessment, we would not expect reassessment unless they would be selling the property.
The other one is eminent domain?
The other one regarding eminent domain, the plan itself, you know, specifically states that eminent domain would not be used on residential properties.
Okay. And if this is voted in, that's a legal condition of the resolution?
It's part of the plan. It's part of the adopted plan.
Okay.
Right. So it's not only in the adopted transit corridor plan that you've already adopted, but it's also repeated in the resolution that is before you this evening.
Okay. Tom, did you have anything else?
Yeah, if you don't mind just.
Sure.
So if that language were in it, it would become an ordinance within the plan, protecting those 111 homeowners, you know, within the plan.
Right. The transit corridor plan has already been adopted, and that plan has in it already language that prohibits eminent domain on residential properties. And tonight's resolution has an additional statement that reaffirms or confirms that in front of the council for review and adoption tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much. If it is passed, though, the county's not going to come in and revalue our property, because the zoning has changed, our zoning will change, will it?
The reassessment of properties occurs only upon sale, so the plan doesn't require anybody to sell their property. If you want to hold on to your property, you can do that, and it would not be reassessed. If you do decide to sell it, then the new owner would pay property taxes based on the assessed value at that time.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Rico, number nine in 10A.
I already did number nine, but thank you, Mayor. I stand, Robert Rico, excuse me, Seventh Avenue. I stand here before you to make two requests. One, please place on the November 2014 ballot measure, a ballot measure to modify the city ordinance 1284 only in the transit corridor area, to increase the building height to the proposed in the TCP and to allow above-ground parking structures. And, two, please support the passage of this November ordinance 1284 ballot issue and undertake a citywide public relations program explaining to the voters, one, why this change is needed in the TCP, two, there will still be multiple opportunities for citizens to participate in and offer their support and objections before this council for each and every future building permit request that includes a building height above 50 feet and/or includes above-ground parking, and, three, that without these changes, it will be almost impossible to improve and grow our business district. I've served on the TCP committee as well as the redevelopment advisory committee, and I know the work and reasoning that has gone into the adopted TCP, and that the TCP must fully be implemented if San Bruno business districts are to be revitalized and grow. Without additional building height, impossible, above-ground parking, San Bruno business district is destined to dry up and fade away. This November ballot issue will not pass itself. The city has a big task ahead of itself to sell the needs and benefits. I will work to pass this legislation. Please give me the reasons and facts needed to successfully convince other voters to pass it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Russell Steins?
Counsel, my name is Russell Steins. I live on Reed. Apparently, the measure 1284 has been amended, correct? And I ask that you guys see the light. I believe the council will be selling the residents of San Bruno short. I think that 1284 was put here for a reason. It was put here for the families and the children of San Bruno and the homes, so that the commercial property wouldn't overrun the residential area. And we, you know, I ask you guys for the vision, to see the real value of San Bruno. We have a precious commodity. It's our land. And I ask you guys, you know, the longer we hold on to this, the harder that the developer's going to try to get it. I mean, there's just no doubt. You look at your neighbors that just moved into your house next to you and ask them what they paid for their house. They're paying a ton. So the commercial property will go up, people want it, the economy is changing, it's popular, it's going to happen, whether you put 70-story buildings, 70-feet buildings, or you leave it the way it is. And, you know, to be honest, I look at Millbrae, and I don't want to run down the street and have 60 people standing outside on the sidewalk smoking cigarettes in front of a 70, instead of in front of a 50-foot, 70-foot building, which is going to happen. I don't think that's the way San Bruno should be. So I ask you guys, you know, you sent out this mailer to 300 people that are going to be affected by this transit corridor. I ask you guys to do a better job of it and maybe send all the people that is going to vote on this, this ballot, you know, the information that you've given to 300 of us that actually are going to be in the zone of these buildings going up and blocking, you know, and directly right upon us. So, you know, I just ask that you guys do, you know, send out some mailers to everybody and do a better job of being a little bit more transparent on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just for clarification, I believe there was not 300 people, but 300 feet. So that's a lot, that's a lot, yeah, there's a lot more people than that. So anyway, okay, let's see. Joe Cassidy, Joe had a question regarding elevator penthouses, height requirement for ADA. He says 14 foot 6 inches above the roof line, this is needed if open space is on the roof. Joe?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm a builder, and I built a lot of these type of buildings in San Francisco, and I just happened, somebody asked me to address this, since these type of buildings, a lot of times you'll have open space on the roof. And to comply with ADA, San Francisco had to make this big change, that the elevator has to go to the roof. And for that to comply, you need 14 foot 6. I just want to make sure that that's in there, because if you go ahead and you approve, if the people approve this measure, and somebody goes in to build, you're going to have a huge problem coming down the line. So it's just one of those things that needs to be addressed now if you're going to put it on the ballot.
Okay. Any comment on that, David, Carol?
The one comment I would have on that is that, as I mentioned in the presentation, there is a provision in the transit corridors plan, adopted transit corridors plan, to allow for 10 feet of additional height for such things as elevator shafts, rooftop screening, cupolas, tower elements. So there is a provision to allow for at least 10 feet. And, you know, that would be the maximum, though.
That does not work. That's the provision that does not work. And I can show you, if I can get your number later, I can show you the drawings and what it needs to comply with ADA. It needs to be 14 foot 6, exactly. I went through this, and I got the ordinance changed in San Francisco, and it took me about two years to get it done, but we finally got it done. So that 10-foot does not work. It works for stair penthouse, no problem, but not for an elevator, with the override on the elevator. Just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
To the chair.
Ken?
I mean, I don't doubt the gentleman knows, you know, what's required for an elevator penthouse, but I would think, even though you're making a provision for those type of extensions to the height, that's something that's going to be taken into consideration. So whether it's 14 and 1/2 feet needs to be on a elevator penthouse, and if So whether it's 14 and 1/2 feet needs to be on a elevator penthouse, and if they're pushing the limit, then I'm sure that the special review will say, possibly reduce your height even maybe as far as reducing the story. I mean, we're not looking at...
That's correct.
Yeah, we're not looking at, I mean, any project, any development that's going to be pushing the limits, and then on top of that, wanting to put rooftop amenities along with an ADA-compliant elevator penthouse is probably going to be highly scrutinized.
I would agree with that. That is correct, because we've identified maximum building heights, and then the allowance for the additional 10 feet under special circumstances for a limited number of features, and a developer would have to work within those parameters.
All right. Any other cards, Carol?
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, good, thank you. Thanks. Let's see. Okay. Roman says, "Suggest free Wi-Fi in this corridor to attract more public." Sounds good to me. I'm sure that's probably being worked on right now. We have some...
Free Wi-Fi.
Yeah. Free Wi-Fi, okay. And we're working on some things right now that are going to surprise you in the very near future, so. Martin Medina, "Impacts to water system." Any comments on that?
In terms of comments on that, the transit quarters plan went through a full review.
Do you want to comment on that, Marty?
Sure, sure. Good evening, Council and Bruno. When I first saw the TCP and saw all the lovely pictures, I was really impressed. I know city staff has worked extremely hard on this, and clearly, everybody would like to see a beautiful bustling downtown. Our downtown has been neglected for years. In fact, this year, I have seen an increasing number of homeless sleeping within the doorways. And I know this ordinance will not resolve that issue, but I still ask the council to look into it. The TCP, my first question tonight is, what are the staff and consultant costs associated with the TCP? I heard tonight, $35,000 is what's projected for future costs, but how much money has been spent for everything previously done? My primary concern is the water supply. We all know about the drought. They say brown is the new green. I heard tonight that the TCP went through an EIR. However, did it address the current conditions that we are facing? Is there enough water to add these thousands, 9, 10,000 residents? 8,000? How many? But is there enough water? Because currently, in the past, San Bruno relied on water wells, but over the years, we rely more and more on SFPUC water, and SFPUC water is expensive. There is already a plan for an 83-unit residential mixed-use building to replace the old downtown theater. Based on 10 units of water per month, that's over a half a million gallons of water per month, just for that one location. So if we're going to do all this out, did the EIR address that number with the current conditions? Because that EIR was probably done a couple of years ago. There is a limited amount of water now. Perhaps all projects involved in this TCP should have a separate tiered rate directly associated to the SFPUC rate. I'm also concerned about the costs associated with increasing the capacity of our water and sewer systems to allow this development to occur. Can the council assure us that the new developers will pay for the increase in the capacity and not pass it on to the current ratepayers? And lastly, I am currently undecided on the ballot initiative for these reasons and the questions brought up by the residents tonight. I look forward to the answers, and I believe by law, the council was required to notify the residents within 300 feet, but they really should have notified everybody, because this really affects everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments on water, David?
You know, on water, there was a water assessment plan prepared as part of the transit quarters plan, and I think that Mark Sullivan can probably give more background on that. And if Mark, if you would do that, I'd appreciate it.
The transit quarters plan is a specific plan, and state law has specific requirements for all specific plans. And that includes what's called a water supply assessment, which looks at the projected development, and there was an analysis of the future water demand and whether the city could provide, you know, fulfill that demand. And the water, the supply assessment showed that there was sufficient water supply, and it's also been incorporated into the city's long-term water master plan. It's in the urban water management plan. The growth in the TCP is in the urban water management plan, and it's in the water master plan, as are the other infrastructure, you know, the increases in demand for, for example, sewer, that's also included in the city's long-term plans.
Okay.
So that is considered, and the total number of units is, maximum number of units is 1,610 units, you know, which could be, could add 3,000 people, and over a very long period of time. So that's the short answer for the water issue, and we can provide you with those documents. We have them on record. In fact, we're putting together a, you know, all the background documents that support it are available for public review. Yeah, I think, as David mentioned, the additional development will generate tax, will generate property tax, sales tax, other types of taxes. There are also capacity charges that each development is required to pay, which can be considerable. And as part of the implementation of the transit quarters plan, we'll also be looking into fees, impact fees, that development would pay to contribute towards the additional cost of the infrastructure capacity that's needed by the developments. And that's, you know, once we know that this is moving forward, I think that that will be pretty much next on our agenda in terms of, you know, doing the research and so forth, and coming back to council with a proposal for impact fees related to development.
Okay. You should note also that when developers come in, we tag them with an awful lot of responsibility regarding everything from intersection lighting and street lighting to improvements, infrastructure, they're picking all that up. It's not on the ratepayers and the taxpayers, so there are going to be new ratepayers in this city. I have two other comments which are sort of related, but not really directly related to 1284, and I'm just going to comment on them. From Don Lee and Myra Lee, I believe, they're asking about reducing or eliminating some speaker announcements from the San Bruno Caltrain grade separation. It's annoying and stressful, and you should know that I received an email last week requesting that we try to do something about it. I forwarded that on to the manager, I believe the manager forwarded it on to Caltrain, so we get some comments from them. It is their speakers, it's not San Bruno's. So we're doing what we can to try to minimize that impact. You should know that we're working on that, so, okay. Any comments by the council? Ken?
There was no public hearing.
All right, I'm not going to belabor this. I just want to say that I read 1284 probably for the first time in a while. Maybe about six years ago I read it when we started this process, and then I read it again today. It's 37 years ago, and what's interesting is that the statement says, "Ordinance number 1284, an initiative ordinance to require an affirmative vote of the voters of the City of San Bruno prior to the issuance of any permits or other approvals for high-rise or high-density developments and projects encroaching upon scenic corridors and open spaces." It's such a broad statement as to how, you know, how we're going to affect San Bruno, and it's affected this town broadly also. Fast forward 37 years, and we have proof of many changes to, contradictions to 1284, where I believe we have not affected or encroached upon scenic corridors, and you can hardly call the residential buildings at the crossing as high-rises. I believe the only building that you can call a high-rise is possibly the former spot of the Federal Post Office building on Cherry and Bay Hill, Cherry and San Bruno Avenue, which is 10 stories, and is now the home of Walmart.com. We're talking about seven stories maximum in a train station area, which can't be residential. It could be offices, and it can be a prime space for a business, a large business, or many businesses adjacent to a brand-new railroad station. We're talking about, in many cases, in the downtown, one more story. 10 more feet. There's areas along El Camino that are screaming for more stories. It's not that we're going to go from one story to six stories right away. We're more, what's more important, and what I have learned over my 30 years of being a designer and architect, is that we need to be more dense. We can't have these expensive properties dominated by surface parking. I mean, we're fighting for, you know, we are spending all this money on parking our cars in areas, and we need to give developers a little bang for their buck and their properties, not necessarily alleviating the parking issues, but helping them with downtown parking, but also allowing them to build more, so that they can do more and offer more to our residents. We're not looking at, you know, one big, like an IKEA coming in and buying up, assembling, you know, 20 properties to build some big monster. We're looking at 20,000 to 30,000 square foot parcels. We're looking at one right now at the cinema site. They've assembled four parcels. The cinema site and three bars that have been vacant for how many years? That's redevelopment. And they're not even part of the transit, you know, they're not even going to be part of this possible approval. They're strictly three stories. So I think it's going to happen. I think there's a lot of potential. I'm very, I'm, as an architect that's gone through design process and everything, I can truly appreciate that 1284, what 1284 does is limit height. It does not offer any setbacks. It does not offer design review. It does not invite environmental review. It has no sensitivity really to the adjacent properties. It gives a setback, a 10-foot setback, or in many cases, zero setback. So I'm not, I might be facetious in saying that you can build a three-story box, but there may be some cases where you can build a three-story box. We have a track record of residential design guidelines, we have a track record now of commercial guidelines and working with developers. We have proof. The crossing, Tan Fran, we're doing it. And I believe now's the time, and 1284, for whatever reason, it served its purpose 37 years ago, it can still serve its purpose in many parts of this city. But I think we have carefully, for nearly 10 years now, we have carefully looked at how we can improve the commercial, the vibrant areas of, you know, the potentially vibrant areas of San Bruno. And it's not going to happen overnight, but just like it took 12 years to build a train station, at least it will happen. So I'm all in favor, and I'm very excited, and I'm very, very pleased with staff and the hard work that's going to happen over the next few months also. Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you. I'd like to comment on some people's comments and clarify a little bit, maybe. The agenda with this notice is online. It goes out to people who want it on their emails. It's part of what are, you know, on the city's website. So anybody's interested in this, we've been doing this particular discussion over and over again, all over the place. So to notify everyone in particular that this is happening, many important things happen here at city council meetings. We notify people the way we notify them, and to signal that out or to like admonish us for not doing it for more than people in 300 feet of the whole area, you know, I don't know if that was necessary. Anyway, the other thing I want to make sure everyone understands, if all of this is built out, all of it, and that's a lot, if all of it's built out, it can only add maybe 3,000 people. That's nothing. This is, there's 41,000 people in this city. 3,000 people over, say, 20 years is nothing. So please don't sit and think it's going to be 30,000 people or 10,000 people. It's going to be, at the maximum, 3,000 people. There's 1,610 units maximum in this plan. Not 30,000, not 10,000, not 5,000, 1,610. So I want to make sure everyone understands that. The other piece is on San Mateo Avenue, people, oh, it's neglected, we haven't tried to do anything, and on and on. This council, these, the three people sitting here, the minute we got on this council in 1995, 96, we started working on that. The mayor was, I believe he was the chair of the Downtown Improvement Advisory Committee. I mean, we tried our best. We did not have redevelopment. We had 1284 to contend with, with the height limits. People did not want to come down to San Mateo Avenue and build there because it wasn't cost-effective. They couldn't buy the land and build something and make enough profit on it to make it worth their while. So they didn't do it, and they still haven't done it. Then we got redevelopment, which was a fight. No height change, though, and we had a little bit of money to make some changes and to, some of you may have remembered some of the facade improvements that went up, that was redevelopment money, and some other small changes that we were able to do. But it was a young redevelopment, young redevelopment agency, and we didn't have a lot of the money that many other ones do. And then it got taken away from us, so we don't have that tool anymore either. So think about it. If you're a business owner and you want an X amount size building, you sit down and you say the cost of the land is X, the cost of construction is Y, the cost of, you know, all these other things, and you add it all up, and you say, "Okay, I can do this if I have four stories." Not three, but four. And this city doesn't allow it. So you go to the next city. Now, and then, so our San Mateo Avenue is what it is. It's not because we don't want it to be more vibrant, or we don't want it developed, it's because the developers don't want to come here, because they can't pencil it out. Okay? So that's, I just want to kind of make that comment. The other thing, somebody asked about $35,000. That's the cost of putting it on the ballot and mailing the ballot out to everyone. That's what the county charges us to do that. So if we approve this ballot measure, it goes to the county, the county prints it up, and all of you vote on it. If you want it to go through, you vote yes, and if you don't want it to go through, you vote no. And that's what happens. Plain and simple. So I think it's an exciting plan. I think everyone needs to remember this is going to take a long time for anything exciting to happen with it, because it just is how life goes. It's a tool, really. It's a tool, really. It's, we can then market the city and say, "You're allowed to do these things as long as you follow these guidelines." And I think something will happen, but it's not gonna happen tomorrow. It's not even gonna happen in the next ten years. You know, a little bit here and there, hopefully, but it's, it's gonna take a while. So, this is the tool to let people do that, and that's what we're looking for.
Good. And to finalize, I, I just wanna thank Ken and Irene for saying what they said. I've been at this since ninety-five, and we, I was the chair of the BDC, the Business and Economic Development Committee here years ago. We tried to get a lot of businesses to assess themselves so we could approve the streetscapes and do some things, and a lot of them just didn't wanna do it. It was really unfortunate. The whole thing is trying to make the city attractive. People have said to me since ninety-five, "Why can't you bring in so-and-so to San Mateo Avenue? Why can't you bring in so-and-so to, to El Camino Real?" You have to make it attractive for them to wanna come here. And 1284 is not very attractive. It's forty years old, it's antiquated, and as Ken said, there are no protections, really, other than a height. This is a state-of-the-art resolution and, and ballot measure that we wanna put forward. The comment was made by someone, "Jeez, if you keep waiting, the land's gonna get more expensive." Good. It'll be expensive, empty land. We have to allow, we have to allow developers, and they're knocking on our doors now, to, to develop this land. It was ten to twelve years ago that we started talking in a friendly way, finally, to Caltrain to say, "What can we do with the most, one of the fifth most dangerous intersections in the state of California?" And now you have a state-of-the-art grade separation, which, by the way, did not cost the City of San Bruno one penny. All right? It's the only one in the county that, that we didn't have to chip in literally tens of millions of dollars to do. So-
That's a later argument.
That's a later argument, yeah, if you wanna stick around. If you wanna stick around. But we have to make it attractive. This makes it attractive in a very, very well-thought-out way. There were a number of years that I sat with Ken on the TCP and listened to, to the residents, listened to the neighbors. The business community was part of that, and this is the culmination of all of that. I, I think it can't happen soon enough. We really have to get going. It's not gonna happen overnight. This is a very long-range plan, but there are some things that are gonna happen very shortly. If this thing gets passed in November, developers, you sit, you see an old decrepit bank building sitting down there across from the grade separation. Developers wanna do something with that, but they can't do it at, at three stories or fifty feet. So, there, there's a lot gonna happen in a sensitive way, and there's so many protections in here for you, the residents of San Bruno, pre-this and pre-that, and architectural review and up to the city council. So, it's not like, you know, behind some closed door, something gets approved. This is wide out in the open in a forum just like this where you can all hear what's going on. So, having said that, this is very exciting. I'm looking forward to it, and I would ask the council to take some action.
I'll be happy to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Buehne.